I know I've got, probably some Coke, Coke and water.
It's nice to meet you tonight. Uh huh.
All right, let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session at eight forty-four PM. And I believe we are all here now and we are ready for our second interview of the evening, which is going to be Dr. Paul Gosman. To give you an idea of what we'll be doing, I will do your first question and then we will move around the board, starting over at Ms. Williams.
Very well.
Sorry, starting with Ms. Yeo. First up, can you please tell us about yourself and your background and why you want to be the next superintendent for Omaha Public Schools?
Certainly, and good evening and thank you for the honor of presenting to you this evening in front of the community as well. My name is Dr. Paul Gosman. And I'm here tonight with my wife, who's somewhere around the area, Suzie. We've been married for twenty-eight years. We're on a journey that we like to refer to as Paul and Suzie's Excellent Adventure, as we work our way through the work that we're doing right now. And I am a person who was born in Fremont, Nebraska, just down the road a little ways. Grew up there, born and raised there. Began my education career after graduating from the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. I was a music teacher, band director. My first teaching job was at, actually at, in an informal way, the University of Nebraska, as I was the percussion instructor for the Cornhusker Marching Band. Moved on from there to become the director of bands at several different schools and districts, such as Wisner Pilger, Lincoln Northeast High School. And I was the first band director at Millard West when it opened in nineteen ninety-five. That was my nine-year teaching career in Nebraska. And since that time, for seventeen years, we've been out of Nebraska, working. We've been back to visit, of course. I'm from this area and I still have family in this area. But have been working as an administrator in the state of South Dakota and in the state of Iowa. And so while in South Dakota, I was a coordinator of fine and performing arts for the largest district in South Dakota, which is the Sioux Falls School District, about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand students there. And then began working as their coordinator of middle school education. And then moved right outside of Sioux Falls to be a superintendent of schools. During the time, we lived in Sioux Falls, my family lived in Omaha. And so we always met in Sioux City, because it's halfway in between Sioux Falls and Omaha. And I grew to love Sioux City while I was there and found Sioux City to be a great place, full of great people. And so we decided to make application to that superintendency when it was open nine years ago. And we've had a good run of time in Sioux City. We're very proud of the team in Sioux City. We're very proud of the students and the success that they've had. We're very proud of the opportunities that we've been given in that community. But I want to be clear, after nine years of being in Sioux City, I've made application for one job. And I mentioned that to you at lunch today, that's this job. Very interested in the Omaha Public Schools position. I have four college degrees in educational leadership and education. And believe that I'm well-suited to be a part of the team here, to work with you as a team of ten, if you will, and a team of eight thousand with the entire staff, to move this district forward. Very pleased with the great things that have been done by Superintendent Mark Evans, that's in his time in the district. But I would look forward to being a part of the team moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening. I will have the next two questions for you. We expect each member of our district staff to be culturally competent. What does the term mean to you and what will you do to help each staff member be culturally competent?
That's a, first of all, what does the term mean to me? You know, we're all on a journey, and I'm on a journey, related to the work to understand the different cultures that make up any group or organization. I've talked a lot today with community members in our forums or meet and greet sessions about the notion of the dominant culture of any group, organization, classroom, the dominant culture in this room right now, whatever it might be. And it's because I believe you have to understand the dominant culture in order to acknowledge, understand, and even respect the non-dominant cultures in any organization. And to me, that's central to the work that we must do. You know, as I mentioned before, I grew up in Fremont, Nebraska. I have three siblings, one of whom was adopted into the family because my mom and dad, as I understand it, didn't believe they could have more children. I have two older sisters, and then they adopted my brother, who happens to be Hispanic. And I grew up in Fremont, so then I came along, I was surprised. Wasn't supposed to be there, because they weren't supposed to be able to have additional children, and then I came along. And so I grew up in this fairly homogeneous community, this white community, watching but not understanding, because I was younger, some of the challenges of, like, as an example, the different culture from which he came or the different race that he was, in a fairly white community. And that was the start of the journey for me. But, you know, certainly as I worked my way through my education career, all the way to Sioux City, which is a very diverse community, most diverse in poverty, most diverse in its students of color and students of different cultures. And we have work to do. And I'm on a journey myself of understanding. When you look at any organization, and in this case, we're talking about a school district, the Omaha Public School District, the most dominant culture that's there, so that we can identify and respect the non-dominant cultures that are there. What does cultural competence mean to me? It means that I'm not only able to see and understand, but I'm able to acknowledge and respect the different cultures that make us who we are. I think the second part of your question, Mrs. Williams, was whether or not, you know, how I would see to it that the staff was culturally competent, is that correct? That comes through proper training and discussions. And, you know, I talked a little bit today in one of the community sessions about the reading that I personally do. I mean, one of the books that's most recently kind of changed my thinking, changed my life, actually, is The New Jim Crow. And the work that we've got to do together is going to have to be work that's born out of honesty and acknowledgement of the different cultures that we are. So I hope I've answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
And my second question is, what is your experience in addressing educational issues regarding a culturally diverse population?
Would you read the question again, please?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
What is your experience in addressing educational issues regarding a culturally diverse population?
Oh, okay, so the most experience that I've got is in my current district, Sioux City Schools. Sioux City is a district of fifteen thousand students, a couple thousand staff members. Our population there is diverse, in not the exact same quantities, if you will, per different demographic groups as Omaha. We have a higher percentage of students who are Hispanic rather than African-American, as a comparison to Omaha. We have more Native American students than Omaha does in raw numbers, as I understand it. But my experience is in working with the team there to understand and to work through the changes of Sioux City. Some of that has happened, not only at the district level, but at the building level. And we've had a number of buildings who are very different in the way that they look today than they were years ago. And that's a good thing. But it's important that we work through those changes with our staff members. I want to be clear with you that the most important issue of our time, the most important civil rights matter of today, in my opinion, is that of poverty. And working with kids in poverty is the most pronounced cultural change that we've got to keep our eyes focused upon. We have to find ways to give the kids who are in poverty what the kids who are in wealth or upper-middle class have. And that's through support and mentoring and attention. And so I'm proud of the fact that in the Sioux City Schools, we've been visited by other districts recently, because we've been able to close that achievement gap without lowering the top scores, but close that achievements gap, for achievement gap with a couple of groups. First of all, kids that are in poverty. And second of all, in some grade levels, kids who are learning the language. And one out of every five students in Sioux City is learning the language, meaning they're not a native English speaker. And that would make you assume that they're proficient in their home language, which they're not, in many cases. And so it's a lot of work that's done there. I'm proud of the team for the work that they've done to engage the students where they are and to move them forward. We've brought in trainers to talk about cultural competence. We've brought in trainers to talk about differentiated instruction and meeting the learners where they are. We've done all of those kinds of things. But I think it's through the professionals working together, acknowledging the changing culture that we have and acknowledging the needs of kids in poverty that have moved us forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Describe your overall leadership style, and be sure to address how you build and maintain trust in the concept of team within the various constituent groups you interact with, i.e. the board, administrators, faculty, staff, parents, and community.
Would you mind doing all that one more time?
Absolutely.
Dr. Holman, thank you.
Describe your overall leadership style, and be sure to address how you build and maintain trust in the concept of team within the various constituent groups you interact with.
Okay, and you're not going to list them that time, huh? Okay, so first of all, just to put my leadership style into a phrase, if you will, I believe that my leadership style is that of collaborative and communicative. I believe that we've got to work together. And I believe that we've got to communicate with one another, because it's really important, when you're a school superintendent, to understand you're not going to have everyone agree with you at every moment. And so it's not your work to see to it that everyone agrees with you. It's your work to see to it that not only do you understand, do they understand you. And so it's part of my job is to make sure that there's understanding there. But it's also my job to have bigger ears at times than I have a mouth. I'm going to be talking a lot today in an interview, of course, but bigger ears in the sense that I'm listening and I'm learning the other perspectives that are at play as well. Like, as I understand, work toward understanding those who I'm working with. And so my leadership style is born of that collaboration and of that communication. Because of that work, to listen and respect a differing potentially opinion and grow that understanding, trust grows. And I think we can better as a team then predict the work that we'll do together because of more collaborative and communicative style. And so you mentioned how I talk about that or what work I do to make sure that that works with all of the different groups. In the first part of that, you listed it. It's important to me that leadership, because you were asking about leadership style, leadership has to exemplify honesty, integrity, and follow-through. Leadership has to always exemplify honesty, integrity, and follow-through. Let me clarify that. The honesty piece of that is being honest with someone, even if it might not be what that person wants to hear. Now, you don't have to say that in a way that hurts them or hurts their feelings or anything like that. But often, I mean, we talk about Iowa nice, where I am right now, but I've heard the phrase Nebraska nice used as well. It's important that we're honest with one another, even if honesty isn't maybe what we thought we wanted to hear. You have to expect that from me, and I would expect it from you. Integrity, meaning that I've got a moral center from which I make my decisions. My faith is important to me, and I'm not professing that on you, but I am saying to you that I have that moral center. And I think often, when we have challenges in leadership, it's not that they have an improper moral center. Sometimes there's an absence of a moral center potentially, but that's important. And then I've talked to you about follow-through, or I mentioned the phrase follow-through. More often than not, when I'm hearing a concern about a staff member or principal or myself, it's often born out of a lack of follow-through, somebody that doesn't believe they had the right response time or they didn't get a response, or a phone call in return or an email in return. And so if leadership exhibits honesty, integrity, and follow-through, more often than not, we're going to have great success.
And my next question is, give an example of how your leadership style has been beneficial for successful change. How has it been a detriment?
Okay, so I'll try to think of an example that works well for successful change. The style that I have is one where I like to communicate with the people with whom I work, and I like to work in a collaborative way as best as I can, and I've already acknowledged that to you. We've gone through some significant change in our district recently, because we had a significant construction project that closed up construction. They opened the building that they'd been building, and it was one of those projects where it takes several thousand people to build the building and only a couple hundred or so to operate the building. And so when the construction project's done, the workers who are building move on and the workers who operate come in. And those numbers were so disparate that we lost students in the district this year. We had three years of growth in student enrollment, much like, I know you're enjoying enrollment growth right now. And that had been wonderful, because we're funded per student, as are you in many lenses. And so we had to deal with the chance, deal with the challenge of the fact that our budget was going to have a challenge this year, because we lost students. And so I want to be collaborative with the team about the ways in which we can look at budget reductions there and put together ideas of what might work. But the communication piece of it, Dr. Holman, I guess, is what I'm most speaking of here, where we had to talk with the leadership of our association or of our union, if you will, about the fact that we were going to need to reduce our staff. Fewer kids means that we have a need for fewer staff members. And we were looking at changing the way in which we're delivering middle school instruction in the district, because the new assessment that the state was moving to at that time was an English Language Arts Assessment, not a separate reading assessment. So we wanted to change that. And so we found ways to work together to do that, not with agreement from everyone, but with understanding from everyone, that we were going to reduce our staff. We were going to do that in such a way that was well-communicated to all and would yield the result of the reduction of staff members that were needed, but through attrition, through an early retirement plan, so that we weren't telling anyone who really wanted to work there the next year that they couldn't be there. And I think that collaborative approach, while not flawless, there were bumps in the road as you go through that. And that leadership style yielded that kind of a result.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi there.
I know over the past several years, there's been a lot of talk in Iowa about various school choice reforms. Can you give us your opinion on charters, vouchers, and tax credit scholarships?
That's it? Sure, I'm just kidding. That's a lot. Yeah, let me give you my opinion on that. First of all, the public school is the backbone of America and will maintain and will retain its status as the backbone of America, and it should. Public schools will constantly serve all students that come through their doors, because they should. Public schools are that important to society, to America. And there's been a lot of conversation lately about school choice. I guess my first statements on school choice is that we really need to define that. You know, in Iowa, one of the things that's been frustrating to me is that they've reframed school choice. They're not talking about vouchers, they're talking about education savings accounts, which are vouchers by a different name. They're just trying to pretty up the name. Let's just call it what it is. This notion of taking the money for public education, taking it with the student, and allowing the parent to make a decision where to expend that money, even if it's going to go then to a for-profit school or if it's going to go to a private school, which has a religious component to the education. I don't, for the sake of this answer, don't particularly care which religious affiliation or instruction should be. To me, you can't take those public dollars and use them for that for-profit type of institution or for that religious education. That's not what that process is for. And you asked also about charter schools, which, you know, often are a school that is, you know, in the state of Iowa, for what it's worth, by the way, the only charter schools are ones that are chartered by the Board of Education. So the board has to charter the school, create the charter, parents sign off and others sign off, and, you know, the school exists. But a charter school is a parallel structure, not even, I guess, literally, but it is, but metaphorically, to the public schools. And that charter school, you know, the research on charter schools is relatively clear that there's not a great deal of evidence that they're performing, of course, we can find one that is, performing at a higher level than their public counterparts. And to me, why would we, you know, if we're going to create charter schools, why would we do so at the detriment of the public schools, where we're literally taking the bricks from here and placing them over here to create a parallel system there? The last thing that I'll say about that, because it also involves school choice, which I think is how I began with that and went into vouchers, we have school choice. We have school choice in Iowa, we have school choice here in Nebraska. For goodness sakes, this is one of the learning community districts. You have school choice here. Students can choose where they attend school. And so the extent to which we need greater school choice than we have right now would cause me pause and some level of concern. And that would be work that I would want to do as superintendent with the unicameral, with the legislature, to make certain that they understand there are other ways to get to whatever end they may be looking for than simply opening the doors with a voucher and charter program.
Okay, my next question, I'd like you to describe the process you would use to establish a vision for the school district and what strategies you would implement to create an atmosphere of stability and continuity while at the same time initiating change for school improvement.
Okay, and if you don't mind reading it just one more time, just to make sure I have it?
Oh, that's fine. Please describe the process you would use to establish a vision for the school district.
Okay.
What strategies would you implement to create an atmosphere of stability and continuity while at the same time initiating change for school improvement?
Okay, yep, all right. So first of all, I've been asked so many times today, you know, I've had six meet and greet sessions and a press conference and had the opportunity to meet with some different groups, even over dinner. And often I'm asked, you know, what my vision is for the district. I want to be clear that it ought not be my vision for the district. It ought to be our vision for the district. And I don't even mean a team of ten. We've got a lot of staff members in this district. And a lot of good work has been done to craft vision to this point. Now, I want to be clear with you, and I'll leave a document with you before I go, where I've developed like a transition and entry plan. And I'll get to that later, I suppose, but it's kind of related to the question that you've asked, which is, you know, to me, what are you going to do in the first bit of time on the job to see that you're successful? Mr. Pearlman, I'm going to spend time developing relationships. You just need to expect that from me. My first ninety days or so, actually identified it here as about ninety days, I'm not going to expend time changing, crafting. I need to spend time building relationships and learning. I need to get to the buildings. I need to hear from staff. I need to hear from different groups in the community, whether, all kinds of different groups, that you, as the board, as part of that team of ten or whatever you want to call it, would help me define, so that I can expend my energy initially building relationships. The next thing that I really need to do is dig in even further than I have. I don't know how recently any of you have read the one-hundred-and-nineteen-page document that was the two-thousand-and-thirteen needs assessment that yielded the strategic plan that you're currently living with. It's a great document. I mean, it really is a great document. I didn't just read it before bed, not that kind of thing. It's really a powerful document. It actually helps people prepare for an interview, because you learn quite a bit about what's going on in the district. But it was last done in two thousand thirteen. It's two thousand seventeen. It's probably time to have some conversation about that again. And the strategic plan that came out of that document was two thousand fourteen, it's two thousand seventeen. It's time for us to talk about that next iteration of the strategic plan. But I want to be clear, it's not my vision, it would be our vision, working together as we go back and either brush up that needs assessment or recreate it and therefore help us take the good work that's in that strategic plan. I really believe in the strategic plan, it's obviously moving you forward. But we need to look beyond that plan into the future. And so I want to make sure that I answered the end of that. Would you mind telling me the end of your question again?
Sure. The last part, and you touched on a little bit of it, about what you would plan on doing early on, but what strategies would you implement to create an atmosphere of stability and continuity while still at the same time making some change, if needed, for school improvement?
Right, so stability and continuity is everything. And frankly, you need that moving forward in the superintendent's chair as well. And so, you know, my work by building those relationships and working together with the team would be to not change anything coming in. The stability and continuity early in my tenure would be born from that which you're already doing, the strategic plan that's in place, the actions that are being taken related to that. The continuity for the future would be born out of research. I mean, we need to follow where the data leads us. And a new needs assessment, which would yield a new strategic plan, would get us to that continuity, taking where we currently are and moving us in the logical next steps. Thank you.
My final question.
Yeah.
Have you provided leadership, or I'm sorry, how have you provided leadership for improving student achievement? And did it make a difference, and how are you sure that it made a difference?
Oh, sure. Yes, but not individually. I mean, all great leadership in a project like student achievement has got to happen as a team. We've all got to have some level of investment in that. And so in our case, several different, you know, initiatives have, we've engaged several different initiatives to work towards student achievement. Many different metrics we could talk about for student achievement, but I'm just going to talk about one, which I'm going to measure achievement through graduation rate for the answer of this question. Certainly, I can look at the scores that are on the back wall here of the NESA and, you know, clearly, that's a measurement of achievement on a specific test. We have the Iowa Test of Educational Development or the Iowa Test of Basic Skills as well, which we have similar, you know, work done there. But I'm really proud of the work that the team did in Sioux City to raise the graduation rate, which they did by not looking at the graduation rate. They looked at the dropout rate and studied the way in which students were dropping out of school, how many were dropping out of school, why they were dropping out of school, and coming up with ways, as a team together, to serve kids who are likely dropouts. You know, I'm very proud of the fact that when I first came to Sioux City, our dropout rate was close to seven percent, and today it's one-point-eight-five percent. I'm proud of that change. But I want to acknowledge to you, Mr. Pearlman, the only acceptable dropout rate is zero. So we've got a long way to go. But I'm proud of the growth that's been shown, or the decline, if you will, that's been shown in dropout rate, because of the work that our district did, in part to own the students and the challenges that those students have. We used to send students who were likely dropouts to another location to receive their schooling, kind of an out-of-sight, out-of-mind challenge. Doesn't work in serving students. So we kept the students in their home location and created programs within that home location to serve those students. We had staff members that would go out and find those students and bring them back in. We created a robust kind of career academy structure for students to understand with relevance why they were learning what they were learning and engage them because of that. And to me, that's the metric that, you know, looking at that dropout rate and the decline in that was shown through that leadership. But I want to be clear, that was teamwork, collaborative leadership. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Palermo.
I will have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, describe to me the steps you will take to address and close the achievement gap.
Okay, just one after another. All right, we'll do that. I mean, the first thing we've got to start with is having the data lead the way for us. So we've got to understand the achievement gap that's there. So you've mentioned achievement gap. I have absolutely no idea exactly which achievement gap you're referring to in your question. Could be the gap between all students and students in poverty. Could be the gap between students who are not in poverty and students who are. Could be the achievement gap, often when achievement gaps are talked about, it's between students of different racial groups or ethnic groups that are there. And so, and it's likely that what you're saying is, yep, it's all of those. What are you going to do about that? The first thing we have to do is identify the achievement gaps as we understand them so that we can start from a foundation that's there. start from a foundation that's there, and, and the distance between whatever group is performing higher and whatever group is performing lower. Our next steps then are to dig in on instruction toward that student achievement in, in those areas. I'll just pick one to, to be of, of an example for this, because, I mean, I'll pick the most prominent one that's, that's of most import to me, which is, which is that of students in poverty. Students in poverty don't have often the same supports that students who are not in poverty have. They don't enjoy those things often, because the, it's not anyone's fault. But, but often, those who support them are very busy, doing other things other than, than, than what they could to maybe support them with, with, say, reading at home, or, or mentoring, or tutoring, or that kind of thing, which, which sometimes are paid for in, in, in other families. And so, we've gotta look at the supports that the students have who are not in that challenging situation, and provide those same level of supports to kids who are in those challenges. And so, using poverty as an example, we're gonna have to create those supports for those students, whether that's during the school day, could be for, be before, or it could be after the school day, could be well beyond, through a summer program. And, we would have to track our progress, so, it's important to note, like the NESA that's on the back wall here, you know, that, what you're, what you're showing there is a once-a-year assessment. We need to make sure we've created ways in which we can formatively assess student performance in between the once-a-year time that we, we take this assessment, and, and we need to do that often enough, first of all, that we're able to predict how a student would perform on that larger comprehensive assessment. But, early enough that teachers have the opportunity to change instruction to meet their needs. And so, you know, we certainly understand where the, where the standards that are being taught are, you know, the written standards. We've gotta take a look at the instruction in the classroom, whatever's written must be actually taught. And then, of course, that same standards, those same standards must be tested, and so, the, the work must be done to, first of all, define the gap, and then to determine the likely challenges to the gap, and, and to begin supports within the timeline of the written, taught, and tested curriculum, to give those supports and interventions to those students.
Thank you, last question?
Sure.
Tell me something that you're very proud of.
I'm very proud of my family. You know, I'm, my, my son and my daughter, and, and my wife, I'm very proud of the good things that they do. I'd like to say that, that my wife and I have done all that we could to bring our kids up to be independent thinkers and to go out and make a difference in the world. I certainly suspect you're probably asking me that also, though, through the lens of being a superintendent of schools. I'm proud of the, the Sioux City schools where I currently work, for the great things that they've done recently to become a district with a high graduation rate in an urban center, in the state that has the highest graduation rates in the nation, I'm proud of their work for that. I'm proud of the work that they've done to decrease the dropout rate, which yielded that. And I'm proud of some of the recognition that they've received for, for that same work, whether that's designations given to them by the United States Department of Ed and the White House, like their future-ready designation for technology, or even, even more importantly, the most recent designation they were given as a, as a next-generation high school district. Cuz they're willing to change, you know, we're not known in education for being all that nimble. We're not known for constantly changing to meet the needs of kids, we should be, we should be nimble. I'm proud of our district for doing that. That was way more of an answer than the question asked, but those things that popped into my mind when you asked the question. Thank you.
Dr. Gosman, my name's Mark Snow. How do you involve community, staff, and students in planning, visioning, and other important educational decisions?
Sure. So, how do I do so? I'll just talk about each of those groups that you asked about, community, staff, and students, so I'll start with them in the order that you asked it. The community groups that, that we have in Sioux City that are, that are working with our, our district are numerous and, and beneficial. We have a lot of social service agencies, we have a lot of philanthropic partners and agencies who have done a lot to help us move forward, so, we, we engage with them by talking with them, by listening to them, by, by having them understand what our vision is for our future, this is really important for, particularly the philanthropic side, because sometimes you, you have the blessing of philanthropic people who wanna take your district in an entirely new direction, when you have a strategic plan that's well underway and showing some growth. And that can be a challenge at times. And so, it's really important that we, we owe this to the community, that, that they understand the direction we're headed, and they understand how their agency, or their involvement, or their philanthropic effort might, might partner with us on that, so, that's through a constant effort of communicating about where we are and where we're going. Staff members, we can always do a better job with staff members, but, you know, to, to communicate, you know, we, we do all of the normal things that you might refer to in a, in a school district in terms of trying to communicate with staff members. But, I'm proud of the, the growth that we've done, that we've exhibited with, we have a, as an example, we have a shared cabinet of, of administrative cabinet members and cabinet members of the, of the association, the Teachers Association. And, over the last two or three years, even, even though I've been in Sioux City for nine years, that's really shown some growth, where we're really talking about deep, deeper topics than I recall we did earlier. And so, we're talking about things like, like moving student achievement forward, and, and the way in which we're assessing children, and evaluating, and coaching instruction. And so, I'm, I'm proud of the work that we've done with, with that particular group. Students, I personally meet with, with students in groups, particularly at secondary schools, several times a year, at a high school level, I guess a half a dozen times a year, with a, with a, a group of, of student advisors. I always tell them that my goal for the meeting, the outcome that I wish to have is, is to have them help me understand what it's like to be a student in one of our buildings. It's not easy for me to remember being in high school, just like it's not easy for you, I mean, we all think we kinda do, but we need to know what it feels like to be a student today. And the world's different today than it was when we were in school. That's really important to me, the middle school, I don't meet with it quite as often, but I still meet with, with each of them. I don't do quite as much with the elementary. But, it's important that those students understand when I'm sitting with them, that that's a safe table, they need to be able to say what's on their mind. They need to understand that they've been given a, a great responsibility to help me understand what it's like to be a student, and all of the burdens that come with that, all of the celebrations that come with that. And I would say for all of this, we also have engaged a technology system which allows anyone to communicate with any of us in a way that serves us well. And, and it serves us because people can communicate anonymously if they want, or they can identify themselves. If they communicate anonymously, obviously, we can't respond to them, but, but we still can receive their concern, or question, or compliment, or whatever it might be. In, in the case of, of, of those who report items to us by identifying themselves, we can have a dialogue with those people through this online system. We began that a number of years ago by inventing it ourselves with a, with a system just titled Go to Gosman, where people could just get to me if they needed to and add questions or comments they wanted to make. Now, we use a, a more of a purchase product, and I like it even better, because it allows us to track our response. Do you remember when I talked earlier about honesty, integrity, and follow-through? It's important to me that I can look at anyone on that system and see their level of follow-through in a couple of ways. First of all, we can look at how quickly they're responding, and how quickly they're closing out matters of communication through that technology system. Doesn't mean it's the only way people can communicate with us, but it's a good way, because we can keep data about it. And then, second of all, it's also important, because we can then track the kinds of things that are coming into that system. We can track them by key words, and look at how many things are, are related to this topic or another. And frankly, that communication system applies to all that you've asked about, community, staff, and students, and that's very important to us as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My next question is, what communication procedures would you use to keep district patrons informed about school issues to maintain community support for the school?
Right, well, community support comes through two-way communication, so I'd need to make sure that whatever we designed was something that could go both directions, where they can bring their thoughts and ideas into us, but, but also that we could get our thoughts and ideas to them. And so, there are numerous ways, and I'm sure OPS has more ways than I'm, I'm certainly aware of tonight, on how to communicate those. So, you know, again, just like I've answered the earlier question about my first days on the job, I would begin by working to build those relationships in my own learning and understanding what's there. I don't wanna come in and reinvent everything, because I'm sure there are very strong systems in place already. But, it would be important to me that, that strong systems for the future would include the opportunity for two-way communication, would include the opportunity for accessible communication, so that it's not just something delivered in one methodology, so that people with specific disabilities could achieve that communication as well, whether that's borne on, on a website, or, or in a newsletter, you know, whatever it might be, we've, we've gotta be responsive to, to, to those patrons that we have. And then, of course, we've gotta do everything, I mean, you know, we've gotten a hundred and nineteen languages spoken in this district. We've got a lot of work to do to make certain that we're getting that level of detail to that many people in that many languages. And so, you know, I'm interested in what's already there, but, but those would be the primary areas I'd really wanna take a look at as we began to design anything for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have your next two questions?
Oh, yes.
Uh, okay. In order to maintain a positive working environment, it is important to have high expectations for all employees. What will you do to ensure that measures are in place that all level, at all levels, to hold everyone accountable, and that no employee is seen as being untouchable as related to accountability?
Wow, okay, so, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what's behind that question, but would you mind asking it again?
Yes. In order to maintain a positive working environment?
Yeah.
It is important to have high expectations for all employees.
Okay.
What will you do to ensure that measures, measures are in place at all levels to hold everyone accountable, and that no employee is seen as being untouchable as related to accountability?
Okay, alright. I mean, first of all, I completely agree that, that everyone needs to be held accountable for, you know, whatever that might be, following board policy, following the laws, yielding student achievement, which is obviously our primary objective, and so, that absolutely has to occur. Again, like I answered a previous question, I'd have to start by, by learning what's in place right now. You know, OPS has a long history of, of success, and, and I'm sure there are systems in place. So, rather than come in with all-new systems, which, you know, frankly, I could do that, but wanna take a look at the systems that, that, that are in place there. Completely agree that everybody at every level, including the superintendent, or the school board, or any other level of the organization, need to be held accountable for, for any actions that they take, and, and that those actions follow board policy and law, whether that's federal law or state law. I feel like, and, I'm not saying from you, Ms. Ryan, but, but I feel like there's something behind that question that I just don't know, in terms of what may have happened in the past or something, certainly not necessarily in the recent past. But, I, I guess I just respond by saying that's, that's very important. It's important that we have a series of checks and balances, multiple checks and balances, for all employees in actions that they take, and, and in, in work that they do. And, I'd be interested to see where we are, so that, you know, where we found any, any areas of weakness, we could provide strength.
And, my next question is, define the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent, and the roles and responsibilities of the Board. What will you do to assure those roles and responsibilities are maintained?
Okay. Thank you for that question. I would, I would start by saying, let's even go a little bit further. And, and I'd like to just mention to you the different governance models that you may all be aware of, that I'm aware of, that, that, that we see. You know, often you'll see a city council. And you'll see the city council members are paid, and often, there's someone who's paid even slightly a little more at that level, which is the mayor, whether that's directly elected or council-appointed. Or, you look at a county commission, where the commissioners are paid positions. And, you often think of the county commission, or the city council, or the school board, it's kinda the same level. But, there's one distinctive difference in that the school board's not paid. You all are volunteers, I don't know if everybody's aware of this, that the school board volunteers for this effort, and, and, and they're, why are they not paid? And, and to me, it's not about the money, because you're doing this as, as a group of volunteers, and I appreciate that you are. Thank you for being on the Board, thank you for, for the work that you do. But, it's a statement about governance. In school districts, the Board hires their one employee. And this gets to the answer of your question, the Board hires their one employee and manages their one employee, the superintendent of schools. Yes, there are eight thousand employees in the district, roughly, a little less than that, actually, but, but, the Board has that one employee. And, because it's the kind of model where that employee needs to be a very highly educated expert. And I've got expertise in education and experience, as, as do the other candidates here. But, but, but it's the governance model that I'd like to talk about. So, in, in, in designing that governance model, let's talk about the work of the Board. Hiring, managing, their one employee, and setting policy for the district. And policy is best served when it defines outcomes. Okay, there's been a lot of talk lately about law or policy in certain areas, and, and should we create a law to do this? Or should we create a law to tell everybody how to do that? Laws don't work well if it's a step-by-step series of direction, laws work best when they're set of outcomes, and then locally, the locally-elected Board and locally-hired superintendent can, can bless you, can move, move that forward. And, and so, the, the work of the Board is just that, to hire and manage their one employee and to set policy for the district. Let's not forget that the biggest policy of the district, budget. I mean, and you can't overlook that, I mean, that's, that, you know, so, in essence, that's, that's kind of a, a third activity that you have. Where in those other governance models, the work of those other governmental bodies are to do more of the administrative work. I mean, they're, they're actually rolling up their sleeves and doing that work. And, a lot of times, and, and I didn't, I didn't follow any of your elections, so I don't know what you did or didn't do, and so I don't wanna disrespect anybody, but, but often, when you see people run for the Board in other communities, when I see them running, and they say things like, well, when elected, here's what I'll do. If you elect me, here's what's gonna happen. And I don't think there's a broad understanding, I think you understand it, we've had conversation about this, I guess, but, but, I don't think there's a broad community understanding that one Board member can't, can't do any of those things they said they'd do if they were elected, because they don't become the single leader of the district. They're, they're part of a team of nine in this case, that has to speak with one voice, which often can happen in a five-to-four vote or something like that, but at least it's one voice that came up with this answer. And so, then the Board has to understand that the superintendent has gotta make decisions within board policy, so you give the superintendent and other staff members direction through policy, to do the work that's needed. And I think here's, here's where, where, where it's often misunderstood. You cannot hold a superintendent accountable for a decision you won't allow the superintendent to make. And so, as you do your work as Board members, and as the superintendent does their work for the district, the superintendent has to work within the boundaries that have been given by the law and by you as Board policy, and by the regular conversations that you have in Board meetings, which often are open meetings, as they should be. But, our work has to be done in, in that kind of a format. And so, it's my job to achieve the outcomes that you set for me, if I am the superintendent of schools. It's my job to understand that, that we've set targets through the strategic planning process by defining metrics of achievement growth. But, it's then the Board's job to support that work as we're doing it, so long as that's yielding the success that we're looking for together. And I think more often than not, that's misunderstood about the work of a Board compared to the work of some other governmental body, because of the required expertise in public schools. And so, I appreciate that question very much, you can tell that's one that's of great passion for me.
This one continues on that last one, and I think you've touched on some portions of this one. How do you envision an effective working relationship with the Board?
Okay, good, and that, that reminds me, I didn't completely finish the question that you asked me as well. You can always become a better Board, and I can always become a better Superintendent. And so, let's grow together. There are all kinds of vehicles by which we can bring in people to help us better understand governance and, and relational training for Boards and superintendents, so I'm not certainly here to sell any one model versus another. But, I think it's important that the community understands, and that you understand, and that I understand, that we're gonna dedicate time each year, each half-year, maybe even each quarter, where we're gonna grow together. We're gonna grow together so that we're a stronger board superintendent team. Doesn't matter how good we are today, maybe we start today and we're the strongest one in the nation, we can still get better. And so, it would be important to me that, that we committed to that together, that I'm gonna grow as a superintendent, and, and you're gonna grow as a board, and we're gonna do that together, by bringing in people who can help us do that, in such a way that will, will yield that growth together. Would you mind making sure that I answered that question? I wanna make sure I caught the end of that.
Yeah, I think you, you touched on it.
Okay. Okay, very well.
Next question is, what steps can be taken to reduce the number of students who are suspended and expelled, without diminishing teachers' ability to maintain order in the classroom?
Yeah, well, you know, once again, this is one of those areas where we have to follow where the data leads us. You know, we've gotta study reality. I'm, I'm interested in studying students who are expended, sorry, long day, suspended or expelled, through a number of different lenses. Certainly through the discipline infraction that yielded the suspension, or yielded the, the expulsion. But I wanna dig into that data and disaggregate it a little bit further. I'd like to know if, if we're suspending or expelling students by the same demographic population that we exhibit in the school district. My guess is, we don't. My guess is that we overswing on students from specific racial, ethnic, demographic groups, and, and that can tell us a little bit of a story. I think it's important that we look at that. I think it's important that we look, again, at the infractions that occurred first before the suspension and the expulsion. And I think it's really important that we, we know and understand what other options are available, other than suspension and expulsion, for students. I don't expel students in districts where I work at great rates at all. As a matter of fact, it's been years since I've done so, because kids that are not in school aren't learning. And so, I wanna find any possible solution prior to expulsion. I'm not saying expulsion's not necessary, and not, shouldn't exist for very extreme cases, it should. But students who aren't in school aren't learning, and we owe them that. That's, that's that whole notion of free and appropriate public education. And sure, they've made some decision or action that, that has created a real challenge. We've gotta find ways, and so I guess I, I need to know, Mr. Scanlon, I need to know a little bit more about what options are available there, and where we're placing kids based on those options. And I'd wanna look again at where we're placing kids based on those options, based on racial, ethnic, or demographic group that they belong to. And, and by, by studying that data and following where the data leads us, I think we can make a, a, a very positive difference for, for the district over time, by then setting goals for ourselves, in, in changing those metrics for the positive. Obviously, discipline infractions are best prevented rather than reacted to. Alright? So if we can find ways to create positive behavior, and that's something we've done in the Sioux City Schools, that, with great stride, and I'm very proud of, is, is, you know, a student discipline program that's really focused on positive behavior and rewarding positive behavior when it's, when it's identified at all grade levels, and acknowledging that, that, you know, discipline infractions are best prevented, not reacted. You know, often we hear about, you know, some program or, or service that's just a bigger hammer, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna swing harder when we need to react to a problem. And, and, and we're always gonna have to react to discipline challenges, we can't get away from that. But the more that we prevent, the more problems that we prevent, the fewer we have to react to, and so that's important to me as well. Yeah? Mrs. Gudding?
Okay, well, I have several questions.
Sure.
The first one is, can you give us two or three examples of excellence in student achievement at specific school districts with which you are familiar, and discuss the reasons for the success?
So, excellence in?
Give two or three examples of excellence in student achievement at specific school districts with which you are familiar, and discuss the reasons for the success.
Sure. You know, I'll, I'll speak to the, to the excellence that I see in the district where I work now. It, it, it needs to grow, but I'm very proud of, of the growth that's happened, most recently, in, in student performance on the AP scores, the AP testing. And we've got more students taking the tests, and the students taking those tests are, are scoring higher. And I think the staff members, you asked about the reasons for that, I think the staff members became very invested, not only in teaching the course, but understanding the strength of, of, of what would occur if their students engaged and, and performed well on those assessments there. I'm thinking of, of, of a school district that, where I, where, where I previously worked that has an international baccalaureate program that they're very proud of. You know, international baccalaureate, I think, is a, is a model that was originally suited for a specific group of students, but has begun to serve well. I know there's IB here in, in, in the Omaha Public Schools. Would be interested in, in, in learning more about why, why we really focus on that at the middle and, and, and high, kind of the secondary levels here, rather than elementary as well. But I'm, I'm thinking of a district that, that has had great success because of that focused study, that, that robust curriculum that's there. And I think that's because the students, the families, the staff members, they have all bought into that structure, and that robust, rigorous nature of, of that particular curriculum and program. I think there are all kinds of examples of, of districts that have found ways to use dual-language programs, or, or even bilingual programs, to serve kids, kids who are not native English speakers. And, and I've seen that excellence in, in our own district, and I, I feel like I saw a bit of that today in, in, in the school that I attended, that had the dual-language program on the tour. And so, you know, I'm just trying to give you some examples, Mrs. Gudding, that, that, that cover more than just what some might think of as the traditional, you know, high-yielding ACT score, or SAT score. Excellence comes in a lot of different forms, and we need to recognize it. One of the questions earlier asked me about, I think, I think it was, Ms. Ryan asked a question about, about systems and protocols for accountability, and what I thought you were originally asking about was, was recognizing excellence in staff members. And I'm, I'm pleased with some of what I've seen, about the way in which OPS recognizes staff members' success, but I think we can do more of that, and look for excellence in, in, in all kinds of ways, other than just what have been historical notions of, of student performance on a standardized assessment, or, or that kind of thing. I hope that answered your question. Okay.
And you gave me a few seconds to get to my next page, I think.
I've been talking all day, so I'm happy to wait a little bit.
Yeah, so you probably need to drink water, too. Okay. The next question is, in general terms, how would you deal with flat or decreased funding for OPS, should that occur?
Sure. You know, of course, you gotta take a look at, at the reasons behind the flat or decreased funding, whether that's student enrollment, whether it's a legislative decision, and how would I deal with that? You know, once, once discovering that reason, we'd have to dig in, and begin to work on solutions based on, on the reasons behind it. As an example, just to try and give more depth to your answer, you know, I'll assume that for, for the sake of this conversation, we're talking about, you know, the legislative decision that yielded flat funding, which for one year, you can probably survive in a district, particularly when you have scale of the size of OPS. But you can't do that for long, and continue to reward your staff members, as they should be rewarded, and to serve students as they should be served. I should've done that in the other order, students first. And, and so you would, you would want to design processes to yield understanding elsewhere outside of the district, as to what this flat or decreased funding is doing to students, and doing to staff members, and begin to work with a grassroots or grass tops, a, a group, to help the legislature, you know, in this case, the UNICAMR, understand what challenges are there, and, and what their decisions are, are often meaning. You know, more often than not, legislative decisions that I've personally witnessed that deal with low school funding, have actually raised local property taxes, which often legislators say they don't wanna do. But the decisions they're making end up with unintended consequences of, of raising local property taxes. And I find that, that crafting that narrative for them, a very honest, integrity-filled narrative, and following through with that, shows them the challenges that are there. And then I, I, I would say that I, in, in the example that I'm using right now, just so I can respond to your question, I remember my dad teaching me that, that, that a difference is made by those who show up, which I believe is someone else's quote, but I remember my father teaching it to me, where a difference is made by those who show up, and, and you're gonna have to show up, I don't mean you personally, I'm gonna have to show up, where those discussions are taking place, to make sure that the repercussions of the decisions are known, and providing different options to provide success in the future.
Great, thanks.
Yeah.
Can you also explain the proper role of early childhood education in public schools?
Sure. In the district where I currently serve, we have a high saturation of students who are four-year-olds, as a matter of fact, who are in our preschool programs. There are two areas where I think Iowa probably, right now, is a little bit ahead of Nebraska in what, what should be done in terms of funding for schools, and I wanna call those two areas out, because I think they're really important. And the second part of this will answer your question, but the first part is in, in more funding for concurrent enrollment, and, and college credit, for students who are taking high-level career classes in high school, and as they're preparing to graduate from the district with a diploma, and with a plan for their future, very important that they have both of those things. But the, and, and that occurs in Iowa right now. We've got many, many students, thousands of students who are earning thousands, and tens of thousands of college credits. The other is at the other end of that educational pre-K-12 continuum, where, where in preschool, we have the blessing right now of a, of a, a private-public partnership to deliver volun, it's a voluntary program for preschool, for students who are four years old. But we've got about eleven, twelve hundred, about eleven hundred four-year-olds in our community, and, and over eight hundred and fifty of those four-year-olds are in our preschool programs, the private-public partnership preschool programs. And we have got to do more earlier. Another step that I would wanna learn more about in, in Nebraska, and what's available here, is that, that, you know, a lot of districts in, in, in my neck of the woods, in the last two states where I've worked, have other programs in between preschool and kindergarten, such as, some, some would refer to it as a beginner garden, or some would refer to it as a transitional kindergarten. You're talking about kids who are five, they're old enough for kindergarten, but maybe they're not quite socially ready, or they're not academically ready for that. And in some states, you can actually receive an extra year of funding for each of those students who go through one of those programs. I think it's really important to take a look at that, as a part of your continuum from pre-K, all the way through high school. And so, I believe that, that early childhood instruction is central to the success of a district. They have to come into kindergarten ready to learn. And frankly, I think that's something that, 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 you know, is, is not an easy fix here at OPS, or in the state of Nebraska even, but it's a must-do for the future. Not exactly sure how we would do it, but it's something that must be done, in order to serve parents and, and families, and, and students and their achievement in the future.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, last question.
Sure.
Before we finish, what else would you like to share with us tonight?
Sure. I'm, I'm gonna hand out a, a document to you, and then I'll come back to the mic, 'cause I realize people can't probably hear me if I don't. Is that acceptable? Okay. So I really have two things, one of them is this document, and the other, I'll just mention before, before we close. What I worked to develop for you, and, and want to share with you this evening, is what I'm referring to, is just a transition and entry plan. One of the questions that you asked me, as we were getting ready for this interview, and, and not many know that you went through this process, probably, but you went through a digital interview process with a number of candidates, as I understand, and, and then you watched those candidates engage. You asked me, what are you gonna do in your first ninety days? And then you gave me three minutes to answer that question. And that, you needed to do that, right? 'Cause you were processing a lot of, a lot of information, and, and yet, I wanted to go a little deeper than I gave, than I could give you in three minutes. And so I just wanna call your attention to this document, and, 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 and it's just titled, "The Superintendent Transition and Entry Plan For, For Me, If I Were To Become The Next Superintendent Of Schools." I wanted to make sure I didn't pass on the opportunity to share with you, on page two, my core beliefs about education. I just wanna touch on a couple of those, right now. You can read them, I know you don't need me to read them to you. But, but I wanna make it clear, that, that these are my beliefs, and, and, and I suspect you'll agree with me on, on frankly, all of them. But I, I wanna acknowledge the fact that we've got to take time to acknowledge that all children should have the opportunity to learn. And that's what I'm talking about with preschool, and some of the other things that we've talked about. I believe in leadership, and I believe that instruction is leadership, and I believe that custodial work is leadership, and I believe that driving a bus is leadership. I believe that anyone who works in or around a school is a leader, and that leadership is an art. It's, it's an art that's informed by science, it's not a science. We're not gonna get replaced with robots someday. It's not that kind of science, it's an art. And, 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 and that we've gotta celebrate our community. We've gotta celebrate our community and the cultures that make it. We've gotta acknowledge, kinda like I answered a question with Ms., Ms. Williams, that, that we acknowledge the dominant cultures that are, are with us, but, but we've gotta identify and celebrate and respect the non-dominant cultures that are there. And, and, and I absolutely believe the, the final two bullets, first of all, one, success will come when we prepare to succeed. I often hear people say, "Well, I hope this happens, or I hope that happens." Let, let me tell ya, hope is not a strategy for success. Success comes when we prepare to succeed. And I actually, even though it sounds kinda cheesy at the bottom, I believe that statement about public schools being the most important aspect of America's future, and that goes back to the question that you asked me about charter schools, school choice, vouchers, those kinds of things. But if you look at page three, what I do is, I, I outline for you a couple of obje- objectives, and what I'm gonna do, if, if I'm selected in those first ninety days, the first is to provide seamless transition in the superintendent leadership, while learning about, more about the strategic plan, district initiatives and programs, I wanna learn more about the groups and communities that make up the schools, and more about Omaha. Even though I'm from this area, it's been a while since I've worked here, I wanna learn more. Objective two is to develop relationships, which I've talked so much about with you this evening, while listening to perspectives, such as items of challenge and celebration. And so, the way in which I would do that in this ninety-day plan, just because I know there are a lot of people either watching online, or, or watching here in person, that they don't have a copy of this, I've outlined a group of, a, a different series of groups of people that I wanna meet with, that you would help me, you, the board, this team of ten, if you will, would, would design together. And so this isn't, this is fluid, flexible, just an idea for us to get started, but the, the work that I would do with, with the current superintendent, with, with you, the school board, and the timeline in which I would do it, on page four, I refer to the internal stakeholder groups, and you'll help me define those, but I've outlined the central office team, the building teams, the association and union leaders, the instructional staff groups, the classified staff groups, I wanna meet with students and learn things. And, and I've also outlined here, for those that are watching online, or, or in the room, the kinds of questions that would be asked of each of those groups. I think it's important for students to say to, to the superintendent, "If you could change one or two things about your schools, what would they be?" I wanna hear that from students, so that we can learn and inform for the future. If you, just quickly, it's only six pages, so if, if you just flipped to page five, I've outlined similar work for external stakeholder groups, I'm sure you'll help me grow that list that's there, if we were to do that. And then I've, of course, outlined statewide stakeholders as well, maybe the member organizations that you belong to, I didn't put in here, but should have, like Cube, or Council of Great City Schools, or, or National School Boards Association, but of course, I've, I've put in some of the member groups, like, like, like the State School Boards Association, and, and the Governor Key Legislators, those kinds of things. But ultimately, on page six, I'm just outlining for you the fact that I would wanna come back to you after this qualitative study was done. There's not a lot of data here that's numerical in nature, but it would be data that would be learned by looking for common themes, from group to group to group, so that I could report back to you and the community. Those common themes that are there, I can tell you about the common themes I heard all day. I heard about transportation today, I heard about student discipline today, I heard about, you know, all kinds of things as common themes. I'd wanna do that same kinda work with, with, with them as the leader. I'd like to close, and, and so that's just how I've outlined that plan, just so that you know I've thought about that. I wanna, I wanna close by saying, I know you've got difficult decisions ahead, and I'd certainly wish you well as you make those decisions. I wanna remind you that Suzie and I are very excited about the opportunity to be a part of the Omaha Public Schools team. I have applied for one job since I moved to Sioux City, and it's here, in Omaha Public Schools, because I believe the needs of the district, and, and the, the expertise, the education experience that I bring, are really solid match. And I'm fifty years old, to me, this is the possibility to, 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 to move to Omaha, to become a part of this team, to finish my education career, and I intend to be in education for another twelve to fifteen years, just And I intend to be in education for another, um, twelve to fifteen years, just in case you're wondering. Could be longer if I'm having a great time because my goal every day is to make a difference and have a great time. But, but I, I just want you to know, I'm sitting here today with that kind of a commitment if, if that is what, um, the board should choose to do. I also acknowledge that you've got two other great candidates and you've got difficult decisions ahead, so I wish you well with that. And thank you for the opportunity to address you today.
All right. Thank you so much for spending the whole very long day for you with us. Um, so we started the school tour, is that about?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty this morning?
That's right.
And I'm going to recall about the meetings. We do not have any receipt of reports. I believe that is everything. So let the record reflect that the meeting is adjourned at nine fifty-four PM.
Wonderful. Oops.[1765.73]